Okay, you guys, we are back. The Sadeek Show, welcome back to our last show, this is called Unapprobable. So I try to, you know, jump from show to show to keep it kind of diversified so you guys can listen to what we're saying and, and what we're doing. We are sitting here with Riverside RCC D trustee, area five candidate Darrell Tarrell, and Darrell gave a great, great conversation in the last hour. If you missed it, go ahead and tune in, please share, like, and subscribe if so be it, if you want to do that. A lot of ballots that are already out there, you guys. Question, question, question. If you do not like the candidates on that ballot, number one, vote your interest. Not Donovan's interest, not Darrell's interest, vote your interest. Cause Darrell's really biased, he wants you to vote for him no matter what. But, you know, to do what you gotta do, you know, but the thing is, let your voice be heard. Now, I'm one of those people that will tell you, sometimes, the best option, if you don't like the candidates, it's just not to vote, just sit it out, don't participate. And this election cycle, it is very, very interesting, to say the least, of some of the candidates that are running in some of the different elections. But let's get into it, let's get into it, you know, Darrell, welcome back to the second hour. Darrell, I'd super, I really do appreciate you taking the time to come out and, you know, let your voice be heard. Like I said, I see your signs all over the place, you know, with that big smile and everything and, you know, you're looking good, standing tall, and, and you're consistent, you know, you're consistent, you're a consistent participant at City Hall. Question, did you see last night's city council meeting in Moreno Valley?
I saw videotape of the public comments, cause I was interested.
Okay, yeah, I, I was in Palm Springs doing some stuff out there, so I did not make it, but I have always been one that said that there is no reason for me to come to city council meetings if the staff and the city council members are doing their job. There's no, you know, I'm not gonna go in there and just yell and scream and just to do that, I have other things to do in life, right? So, um, so what did you think about the meeting from, from what you did see? Because I heard it was a show, once again.
It was too much division in, in this, in this, um, in, in the chambers. And it's, it's not only that, it represents what's going on in the chambers, it's represent what's going on in the city. And I think it, it was the fact that this, this division is gonna stop progress for what we can do at RCC, because it affects every institution, because if you have um, division, and you, and people cannot get together for a reason, we cannot move forward. Because it's too much, it's too much hatred for one another.
Well, let me catch you off right there.
Okay.
The biggest problem that, that we're having, in my opinion, is, okay, everybody's gonna have their, their differences of opinion, and we know that. But the problem that I have with, that, that's another reason why I'm kind of turned off, cause like I said, I put six years into it, Darrell, you've put in at least almost twenty years of going to the city council and, and giving ideas and putting stuff out there.
Yeah.
But my, my, my biggest problem is, we're not getting city business done. It's more of a circus on a basis, on a basis, if it isn't the council members, it's myself and, you know, other people in there causing ruckuses, developers, you know, things like that, you know, and the reason I put myself in there, and I'm not gonna point anybody else out, because I don't think it's right of me to point other people out when I know that I also go down there and start clowning and doing what I'm doing.
Yeah, well, you have a point there, because about doing the people's business, is because people uh, the city council meeting is there to take care of city business. That means paving streets, or means paying, appropriating money.
Right, pay bills, right.
And you wanna have an image where you have business coming into this, you know, people, serious people came there to the council meeting to hear their projects, or hear, you know, just variety issues that keeps the city running, and you, you got all this other interference out there, distractions, then that's, that's a bad precedent for, for the business community out there. I mean, because citizens won't want things to be done. And, and that's, city council meetings are a place where you do, this city business takes place. People vote on, on issues, vote on appropriations and things like that, and, and the, the wheels have to keep going, but when you get, all of a sudden you get slammed, it becomes a circus, then everything that's important gets lost in, in, in the following, everybody remembers what took place at the meeting, and a lot of business people who probably travel a lot of, uh,
Bottom aisles, right, to come.
To come to a meeting and sit there and had to listen to all this before they could ever be heard, it kind of sends them, it sends a bad message to them, it's just generous to those people who come to the meeting, because they hear, I'm here to do business, I'm not here for all this other stuff, I'm here, I wanna get, get whatever it is and go back to and get, get started, what I need to do for the city.
Right, and get things approved and moving forward.
Yes.
Um, but let me ask you this, and, and it's been bothering me a lot. Okay, we had a power grab that happened in our city. You know, you're, you're from Moreno Valley, just like myself, same district, you know, we're, we're neighbors.
Yes.
How the hell is the city gonna move forward when we won't even address a power grab by a candidate that is running for mayor, who shouldn't be sitting, two council members shouldn't even be sitting on that dais until we get an understanding of what took place, because at the end of the day, it was directed that they broke the law. A Brown Act violation occurred, and yet, one of those people who was involved in a coup is running for mayor. How can, you know, we get to city business when citizens like myself, cause I'm not gonna let it die, I stand for the rule of law, the rule of law.
Yes.
I want an answer and an explanation to how two council members illegally appointed a former council member, and yet, we're supposed to just sit back and act like the daisies are fresh? Come on.
Well, it's like everything else, if it wasn't for the double, the WLC war, then you got this coming, it's like, well, we have more and more, just like, we, we, we are shooting ourselves in the foot. And like you said, there needs to be transparency of what happened, uh, exactly what happened, let the people read it for themselves, what exactly happened, and let's move on from this event. But if we continue to be distracted by these different things, the city would never move forward, we will be, we will continue to be in this civil war, cause we are in the civil war, if it wasn't WLC, it wasn't recalls, it's this, it's, it's a continuing cycle that we haven't learned from, and I think it has built more dissension.
And mistrust.
And mistrust, and it's, 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 it's like it's digging its claws into the foundation of our city. Because these, these things that are happening, it has a long, a long-term ramifications of what people look at the city, because it's getting worse, it's not getting better.
Right.
And, and it has to end, but like you said, people gonna have the difference, but people wanna think, they wanna know, it's the truth and transparency, what happened? Let's get it out there, and let's put it to rest.
Let the ships fall where they lie. If some councilmen get recalled, so be it, you should never put yourself in that position, because you were warned twice, three times that night, and you were there that night, Darrell. Were you there?
No, no, no.
No, I think you were there, yeah, I think you were there.
I heard, yeah.
But, but the thing is, the city clerk addressed it, the city attorney addressed it, and members of the chamber, of the, of the city told them, don't do this, don't do this, this is what you're doing. And they did it anyway.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, I mean, you, you have a city attorney for a reason, to advise you on city, on city matters. And once, we, once somebody like that tells you, and they give you advice on, on things that's, that's could put you in
Jeopardy.
Jeopardy, that you should listen, you shouldn't just disregard it. Cause even past city council, city councils, people always listen to the city attorney about their advice, cause that's, that's what you pay them for, they give you advice on, on issues related to.
Legal issues, so that you don't get sued, right?
Yeah, so you won't get sued, and, and I've never seen anything like this before, I hate to say that, but, but when someone like that tells you, here's, don't do it, you shouldn't do it, just, hey, you know what? I've listened to the advice of the city attorney, and I'm not gonna do this.
Right, you know.
And then put that in the end of it.
Right, and, 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 and what is sad is they think that because we have a low education here in Moreno Valley, right?
Yeah.
Graduation rate.
Yes.
They think that we're all stupid. Ladonna Jimson just happened to be honeymooning and hanging out with her husband in the parking lot to be appointed like that, and the sad thing is, if they had just waited a week, the mayor would have returned, they would have had the majority, and they could have moved forward from that point.
Well, yeah.
You know, and, you know, for everybody to sit there and say, it's no different than what, uh, the appointment of, uh, uh, Mayor Gutierrez, that's BS, because it was on the agenda. And they had a quorum. When he was removed, he was rightly removed, cause he didn't live in the district, so he was removed, he did step down off, off the council, he wasn't the mayor, off the council, and he ran, and he won the seat. Did I like the fact that he ran again and won the seat? We, to me, it was like, that was a no-brainer to put this guy back up there. But they did, that's how democracy works, you guys, so I'm, I'm tying that in to tie it with this, when you get on the trustee board, you're gonna have legal counsel as well, that's gonna be advising, advising you guys. In regards to legal counsel, for all the education and the smart things that you know and stuff, if advised by legal counsel, would you uphold and basically, not adhere, but take into consideration what legal counsel's telling you?
Yes, cause like I said, like I said before, I mean, I'm there to make decisions, and I, and, and I, I'm not the smartest person when it comes to legal stuff, that's why you have, um, attorneys and counsel to advise you about things, because I'm smart enough to know that I don't know all the answers. And, and there's people smarter than me, so I listen to folks that know what they're talking about, cause that's what they've been trained to do, that's what they went to school for, and, and they give the best advice, so I'm smart enough to take their advice.
Yeah, um, my understanding, I haven't really seen the whole tape, cause I've been super, super busy dealing, dealing with other candidates and stuff, it's just crazy what's going on here, but, um, I believe, uh, Ulysses Creberas was moved to censure. They wanted to censure him, and they, uh, that's gonna be on the next agenda, they kicked that down the road for the next meeting, whatever, but it was put on the board to censure, uh, Mr. Crebera for, I'm not really sure what the reasons of his censure is, but, but you know, but, but again, I don't know the whole parameters of why he's being censored.
Yeah.
But here's a man running to be the mayor, and he's already involved in scandal. Now, back in the day, when we were younger,
Yeah.
You would, remember Gary Hart ran for president, and they had allegations that he was cheating on his wife? Presidency was over, his, his run for president was over. We've got people now that are, that are, no matter what the scandal is, they're digging their, their feet in, and they're staying on the seat. I just cannot see, and ladies and gentlemen, I just want you guys to understand, either you're for the law, or you're not. It's just that cut and dry. I could abide by what the law says, or what a judge says in a court of law, period. You know, I might not like it, but I will abide by it. We just can't, uh, run around here like we're, we're this, uh, third world, western Adolf Hitler dictator type brown shirt, black shirt, Mussolini type country, and just let strong men and women come in and run roughshod over us like they're the leaders. Ladies and gentlemen, you've got to unlearn what you've learned. In a democracy, a representative government, you are the boss. Darrell Tarrell is running to be a servant. A servant, he's not running to be a leader, he's running to be a servant, he wants the job to serve the people. That means he must listen to what we ask him to do.
Yes.
But, because we are a republic, he needs to make the best decision that he think is right, but that does not make him a leader, he is a servant, we've given him the power to work in our name. He is doing an interview right now with you, the listener, the boss, the one that's gonna pay the bills. This is how it works, I need you guys to unlearn what you've learned. Somehow, Darrell, somewhere across the, the middle, we elect these people, and we say, look at our leaders, they're not leaders, how do you feel about that?
Well, I, I agree, cause you, you, when you, when you're elected, and the people put the trust in you, you serve the people who put you, you serve the people, um, your community, uh, if it's a community, that's what you serve.
The state, or whatever.
The state, whatever, and you listen to folks, like I said, you, you're smart enough to listen to what people say. You listen to advice, you listen to opposing sides, then you, you make a decision. Based on, on the facts, what people tell you, what staff says, what people, or opposing views says, then you have to make the final choice. And that's what, uh, uh, public officials should do.
Should do, so, and, and, you know, and I, I'm glad we, we kind of transitioned into that, so here you are, you're a trustee representing Moreno Valley.
Yes.
I'm a student, and let's just hypothetically say,
Okay.
I'm a dreamer.
Yes.
And, and my cats are fighting, so if you guys, I come to you and I say, you know, hey, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm in a, a legal limbo, you know, um, I don't, you know, I'm kind of really afraid to be here, cause I don't wanna be identified, there's a lot of dreamers out there that don't wanna be identified, you know, specifically that they're dreamers, nobody's running around with a big thing on their forehead saying, hey, I'm a dreamer. But I come to you on, on, on that thing, and I'm, I'm giving you every reason why um, I need help, or we need support in regards to our status here as a student. And, um, what, what would you do in a situation like that, when, when you have students, who, you know, and I'm not saying students don't matter, but, 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 but they do, they, they really do, because a lot of people self-fund their education.
Well, you know, for me, you know, Darrell, if people know me, Darrell Tarrell, I, I care about people. Now, if a, a dreamer comes, comes, uh, before me, and they need my help, I'm gonna do, first of all, I'm gonna tell that dreamer, you know, I understand you, you, you're fearful, cause you don't know
Yeah.
what's gonna happen.
Which way it's gonna go.
Which way it's go, but as a trustee, it's my duty to do everything legally to help you. In that, in that force, to make sure you have the resources you need.
While you're waiting.
Yeah, while you're waiting, and, and to ensure that you, we, we not gonna, being limbo, we gonna keep going forward. So when you out of limbo, that, that you will have everything you need to keep moving forward. But that goes on to other people, to all people.
All people.
That, that needs my help.
Right, African, or you got, you know, whatever, you know, different that comes here.
Because I just, cause we, we in a unique situation where we have dreamers out there that just don't know what their future's gonna be, so they, they.
Well, a lot of them are, are, you know, I'm gonna catch you off, but a lot of them go back into the shadows, because they are so fearful.
Yeah.
Of, uh, you know, being targeted as, you know, and, you know, I'm not saying it's embar, it shouldn't be embarrassing, but to some of it is. It's an embarrassing thing, cause you're not really a citizen, but you've been here all your life, but, uh, my thing is this, God forbid, cause to me, these people are American, no matter how you look at it, whatever, uh, God forbid, a radical Democratic Republican, whatever, gets in there and they rule against these dreamers, and they send them back. If we're gonna send them back, at least they're gonna go back with a two-year degree, not wasting any time, and taking that degree back with them, wherever they go. You know, you know, it's, it's stupid to say, oh, they're all gonna go back to Mexico, no, they might go to Canada. They might go to Europe, they might go wherever they're gonna do, but the point is, you know, if, if, if that way out scenario ever happen.
Yeah.
You know, and that, and that's the thing, because a lot of young people that I talk to, and some of them I know that are dreamers in my neighborhood, Edmont, by the way, for you guys that are, that might be new. Uh, some of these people are dreamers, and these young people are dreamers, and they do worry about those things, and I told them, you know what, that is still no excuse for you not to get a better education.
Yeah.
The resources will be there.
Well, yeah, that's, I, and, and that's the thing, as a trustee, I would do for, like I said, known for dreamers, but to, to ensure that the folks that are who are listening out there, the students out there, that know on that, you know, Darrell Tarrell's gonna be your champion. He's gonna fight for you, he's gonna stand up for you, he's gonna be your voice, I'm not gonna let anything happen to you, I'm gonna do whatever I can legally to ensure that you continue to get your education, to continue to get the resources you need, and so you know that you should, you, you have somebody that got your back. And I will do everything I humanly possible can do, and that goes for any other student out there that, who, who's, who lives in fear, that they, they don't have the resources. If it means you graduating from, from RCC, from Moreno Valley College, or whatever college you graduate for, Norco, that if you can't afford, it's not, it's nothing to be ashamed about if you can't afford something. But we have to do, as, as a trustee, is to make sure, work with the foundation, to make sure that people that don't have gowns and caps, they, to give them the, 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 uh, caps and gowns they need, so they can walk that out.
Right, because, you know, I, I really think when the accomplishment, now, I have twelve degrees. I've been to nine of my graduations, and I go to all of them, because you work so hard, and at the end of it, not to participate in that graduation ceremony, it's just a pat on the back for what hard work you've done and the sacrifices you made, cause how did you feel when, 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 when you got your, your, your first two-year diploma from RCC before you transferred?
Shoot, I was like, I was so blown away, because.
You're like, this opens doors for.
Well, well, yeah, because, you know, first of all, I didn't even know you can get a, you, you graduate, you can walk that out.
Right, right.
And I was like, so excited, I'm like, gee, like, I did it, yeah, I did it, all that hard work, and, and that's where we say we go back to, like I said, the dreamers. There, there was folks, there are folks out there that, you know, you see their parents who, who came here and make a better life for their son or daughter. And, and they see, they stand up there, and they be proud and see that person.
So proud, that they're gonna be, you know, that their kids have a better chance of living that American dream.
And, and so, you know, as a trustee, you know, Darrell would do this for them, to make sure that they have those opportunities and have those resources, and do everything humanly possible to s, make sure that they could, they could make that dream a reality, and so their parents could sit there and say, you know what, we did all that sacrifice for our little boy, or little girl, to walk that out, and, and, and create another pathway to some, into society.
And, and you know, and, and the good thing about that, Darrell, I'm glad that, that you're gonna be a champion for them, because I don't want these kids thinking that, oh, I have to wait until a decision is made by Washington. President Obama signed the Dream Act over ten years ago. And these kids are still in limbo. You know, I mean, you know, because of, uh, Supreme Court, so they're taking their time doing it. And I don't want these kids to sit there, cause there's a lot of them that think like this, well, I don't wanna, you know, put in these resources and go to school only to be shipped out or shipped back out, no. Darrell's gonna make sure you, while you're waiting, until we get the word.
Yes.
And nine times out of ten, you're gonna get the word that you, that you're here to stay. That, but you're not wasting any time, you know, we don't want these kids wasting their time. You don't, you don't wanna be thirty years old talking about, well, I'm still waiting to be a dreamer, you know, I'm still waiting to dream.
Yeah, that's what, you remember when we talked about Moreno Valley College meeting, the challenge in our community?
Yes, absolutely.
This is the thing we do, Moreno Valley College can do, is to help our, our dreamers. And help the dreamers to make sure they get the resources, and not only the dreams, but other folks who out there, who come from other countries, ensure that you get the resources too. You're not gonna be left behind, we're gonna make sure that you guys at Moreno Valley College and RCC District will be your champion, cause Darrell Tarrell will be your champion, and he would do anything humanly possible, legally possible, to ensure that you have those resources.
Yeah, exactly, and I really do think we need to increase the funding at EOPS, which benefits everybody.
Yes.
You know, so.
More resources.
More resources for those guys, but speaking of resources, you know, and, and if you're a student, please like, share, and subscribe, and get, and get the message out here for those guys, that if this is your interest to vote for somebody who's gonna look out for your interest, Darrell Tarrell is that candidate, he is that candidate. So we're gonna stay on the student topic, and what I'm gonna talk about right now is, I'm an alumni myself. I would love to rock Moreno Valley, cause I, I attended a class there, failed, by the way. Failed the class there, by the way, but I did attend, I just failed the course.
Okay, alright.
But I would love to rock Moreno Valley gear, uh, Norco gear, RCC gear, but here's the problem. You go in there, and I want a sweatshirt, cause it's getting cold right now. What is the greatest advertisement for any organization? Advertisement, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Getting it out there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, I loved, I, I would love being an alumni, just like you see the little license plates on cars, and I love reading license plates on cars, cause you can see where they're from, or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, uh, and I hear this from a lot of students, they would love to rock the RCC sweat gear, or the RCC, uh, pins and, and books, and notebooks and stuff. But it's not competitive to go into Walmart and get generic notebook paper, pins and stuff like that, but especially when it comes to the clothing.
Yes.
It, it's not affordable, so, I mean, if you were a trustee, because I hear this from all the students, you know, cause you ask them, you say, well, what school do you go to? Oh, I go over to Moreno Valley. But they got sweats on, but see, they're wearing different sweats, whereas they, you know, you know, kids like to wear that stuff, they like to represent, you know? I mean, so, you know, what, what could we possibly do to get the prices more feasible? Can, can we give a rebate to the students, can we do something, because I, I get it all the time, these kids wanna rock that gear.
Well, first of all, we gotta find out why it's so high. See, that's the first.
Because I don't think that gear is moving, I mean, it's very rare.
If it's, if it's not, yeah, cause like I said, if you.
I would love to, you wanna catch up, I, I would love to give like, graduation gifts that come from their school, you, you know, but I don't wanna go pay sixty dollars just to give them a, a t-shirt.
Yeah, and that's the thing about it, where is this money going, you know, when you think about it, well, you know, as I get, as a trustee, you know, you have to think about things, like the little small things, you have to think about why you want community pride, you want college pride, but people are not wearing the gear. Like I said, rocking the gear because it's too high, now, we gotta find out why is it too high? Now, the thing is, like you were suggesting, a rebate or some kind of, uh.
Maybe a grade incentive, if you, you know, maintain a two-point, what, or two-point-five or something, you can get a ten percent discount, twenty percent discount?
I think you, you have to, you have to incentivize to.
Cause I want a shirt, damn it.
Yeah, if I, you know, if I, like you said, if I had this shirt, that it's like I got it from Walmart, or whatever, for like five bucks, then, uh, then you go to, um, Moreno Valley College, and the shirt is like, like seventy, eighty bucks, why would I buy a shirt like that, and so commit? Right, I love my school, but I'm not gonna pay no eighty dollars for my shirt.
You know, and unfortunately, even though you live in the rich city of Moreno Valley, and it is rich, don't let anybody tell you it's not, if Moreno Valley was not a rich city, developers wouldn't be here buying politicians, trust me, that's a fact, okay? So, but unfortunately, some of us got parents like I had, that ain't gonna spend no thirty, forty dollars for a, uh, you know, gym shirt and some shorts, you know, like, like right now, okay, you guys can't see right now, I'm wearing San Bernardino Valley College shorts.
Yeah, I see them all.
SBVC.
Yeah.
These shorts cost me on sale, got it on sale, shorts.
Okay.
Sixteen dollars.
Sixteen dollars?
Sixteen dollars, but I got it on sale.
Okay.
I had to wait for the sale to go.
Yeah.
And, and, and I rock this everywhere I go, you know, cause everybody from the land empire knows what SBVC stands for, if you've been here long enough.
Yes.
But I wanna rock RCC gear, and I can't, because I, you know, I just refuse to pay that kinda money.
Well, I think any, any right-minded person would refuse, but see, but the thing is, then you, you have an issue at the, you know, at the place, why is it?
Why is it so high?
Yeah, that, that bothers the mind why things are high, but I don't know what goes into the cost, but it doesn't mean it has to still be that high, there has to be a way.
Well, well, it could be high, why can't we just give them a rebate, that's what I'm saying, it, okay, let it stay high, is there something that's, that you as a trustee will can and will do, or suggest to incentivize our students wearing Moreno Valley College gear, because you know what, that's a recruitment tool to bring more students to the school.
Well, yeah, and, and if we wanna talk about community pride, uh, mountain lion pride at Moreno Valley College, or any that we, we have to support the gear, we have to support, I like to walk around with a, with a mountain lion shirt on and stuff like that, but I'm not gonna spend a gazillion dollars for a shirt.
Do you know what's crazy?
What's that?
You can go to Walmart on Day Street right now, which is Riverside, and you can get a Moreno Valley Vikings shirt for nine dollars.
Nine dollars?
Nine dollars, Moreno Valley Vikings shirt, at a Walmart.
At a Walmart?
At the Walmart, off Day Street in Canyon, Canyon Springs Parkway.
But see, that's the thing, they, see, Walmart is competing with the, with the, uh.
But that's smart.
Yeah, it is, it's smart.
But that's a high school.
But yeah, but see, the thing is, though, like you say, you, you have, you have a bookstore where you have a lot of items that rock and, uh, mountain lion.
Very nice stuff.
Yeah, but if they're too high, then we have to do something, the way, as, as a trustee, I say Darrell Tarrell, as a trustee, we, like you said, we have to come up with some incentives, like rebates, or, or ten percent discount, or whatever it is it takes.
To get those students to rock and advertise the schools.
Yeah, because like you said, it brings, it brings pride to the community, because if you could walk around in Moreno Valley and see people wearing, god, they got a mountain lion shirt on, you know, where is that from? Moreno Valley Col, I didn't know you had a college.
Oh man, when I graduate, I'm gonna go over there myself.
Well, yeah, but, but like you were saying, you don't know, like, you remember we were talking about earlier, about how do we, uh, Moreno Valley College can, you know, about the social life? But it also starts with pride.
Yes.
And if you, you know, if people say, I would love to wear it, but it's too high, then let's do something about it, because like you said, it's, it's the greatest advertisement
Of the school.
You could, you could do.
Of the community.
Yeah, it's wear, wear the gear, or have the, the books, the pins, or, or more affordable.
And, and then you think about it as a student, it cuts down on you. And and then you think about as a student, it cuts down on you having to wear a certain wardrobe because you're wearing the school gear.
Exactly, and you show pride because you walk around with a, you walk, it's like when I went to, when I went to UCR, I see people walking around with UCR labs. You're at UCR, why you not wearing no uh UCR shirt and all this stuff? And and first thing they say, they say, well, it's too expensive, you know. It's expensive, but you know, when when I was at the Senate and I was a student leader at uh UCR, we did something about it, we. We worked with the bookstore to make it more affordable, but here's here's what else we did, we created our own store. We created an ASU CR store, that's something that we had a lot to do with. And we had our own, you know, students have to think outside of the box. The bookstore is high, then maybe we'll put your, we'll put your brain trust in creating your own store.
There you go, for those guys that are taking business courses right at at Moreno Valley High School, maybe at RCC itself. Create your own store and you undercut the bookstore, like. So go and order your own T-shirt makers and stuff and start doing that, you know.
That's that's what we did at um um.
Wait, 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 don't don't take that idea, I think I'm gonna do that, but go ahead, no, go ahead.
Yeah, but but no, but that's what we did when we faced with that same kind of problem. We started our own, it's called, it was called the. The seat, this, let me see, the C store, it was the ASGCR student store, we started our own student.
Store, store, and you start, and then people started.
Yeah, we start buying, we start producing our own stuff, like uh UCR shirts, sweatshirts. Hats, you name it, we were doing our stuff, yeah, we had our own student store. We rocked it because, like I said, we didn't wanna set up, like you were saying, we tired of buying expensive stuff over there, so what we did, start our own student store.
Right, you know, I mean, because think about it, I remember going through school and I, you know, I liked this little reminiscence session between alumni. Um I remember getting my books and stuff and, you know, you know, begging when I when I had to beg. And um I would be in the bookstore, getting the book for the class that I could afford. And I would see a hat or a shirt and I really wanted it, but it wasn't within my budget, you know what I mean? You know, and it's just, you know, I just had to be disciplined enough to say, well, even though I want it, I can't get it, you know. We should have some kind of incentive that that kind of rewards the kids, let's say, okay, I mean, golly, the book is over a hundred dollars. You mean to tell me you guys can't give me a shirt?
But see, that's why, that's why I say, you know, students in situations for you guys at ASNVC. I tell you guys, the first thing you guys, you was, Mr. President, if you're out there listening, I'm gonna tell you something, this is what you do. Create your own student store. I'm 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 just being real about it, because that's what we did at UCR. But 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 I see what you're saying, but the center.
But but you know, I mean, you know, if I see all these students coming in, it's the first, it's the fall, it's the first, you know, the new year's coming up, everybody's excited. A lot of these new students are from the high schools. Canyon Springs, Moreno Valley, they're all going to the college, they're still in the same city, which is a great thing. Okay, and they're getting their books and they're spending a lot of money on the books and at the registration for the class. We should be able to give these guys some, like, you know, you know, we want you to rock a shirt, you know.
We, yeah, I I agree, we could do something where this is a seal, like you said before, to get to maybe get handout hats.
We do it in the military, you know, like when you go to recruit, what's the person they give you? Pins. Lanyards, they give you all kinds of. And I I I think, you know, we should do something like that, because then that also makes the kid kind of excited to be there, like, wow, this is pretty different, because.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, stuff like that, because yeah, give giveaway, you know, giveaway shirts and hats and pins.
You know, and 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 even though the school is taking a a monetary loss, is it? In what you get back and and free advertising?
Well, yeah, because you have to look at what you invest, because if you give out, so think about the returns multifaceted, because you have more people. Of students who may wanna come there, because they did not know Moreno Valley College exists. But now they do, because they see somebody.
Yeah, or 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 let's say I'm working at Amazon and I didn't finish my Moreno Valley. Curricular course, because life took me in a different pattern, I had to go, I had a baby and I had to go support my baby and my, you know, girlfriend or whatever. And I'm still rocking my Moreno Valley shirt, even though I didn't complete my degree, I was an alumni, I was there. I'm still wearing the shirt.
Well, that's how you commit, that's how you create the uh the community spirit, where I, I mean, try to link. Because if you start seeing people in the city, regular folks who who alumni like us wearing shirts, because this is. UCR had their own community, Moreno Valley College has its community in Reno, in the city of Moreno Valley, so why not? Advertise that we went there, or students that's going there, walking around with a mountain lion shirt on, say, hey, I go to Moreno Valley College. And and that gives Moreno Valley itself. I your uniqueness and makes it a college town, like. Because who are, you never think of, you think of college towns like the UCLA's, the Michigan's. Exactly, but community college doesn't have that kind of spirit, but we can do something about it, like you're saying, rocking the shirt. Rocking the. Yeah, and and people walking around said that, I didn't, they didn't know, how many people know that Moreno Valley College even exists?
Yeah, you know, because the funny thing today, when I was walking in my gear and I came from the base gym, you know, I wear a lot of military stuff, but. They were like, you went to Valley? I was like, yeah, I said, yeah, I don't think, they go, you didn't go to Moreno Valley? I said, yeah, I did, but I didn't graduate from Moreno Valley, I graduated from RCC. But I said, I also went to Valley because I was in the aviation program. And 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 do you see how the conversation starts? And first of all, I didn't really have aviation program, and it's a free advertising thing, because even though I live in Moreno Valley. I had to go to San Bernardino Valley to pursue what I wanted to do. Versus whatever, and I think that can work in reverse.
Well, yeah, because, like you said, you know, the conversation, so, oh, you have that, so it's like somebody say, oh, you went to Moreno Valley College. Yeah, uh yeah, I went there, I didn't know they had there, and then like you said, it creates other.
Yeah, it just, it leads into other conversations and all kinds of stuff, so I, so I I'm gonna strongly recommend that when you get on that board. That you keep that in mind, and and if you don't, I'll remind you, you know I will.
Well, yeah, but yeah, but you have a point there, because community colleges are not known to be like like. It's just a, it's a college there that you go get, you learn how to be. Yeah, but see, we could change, see here again, be innovative people, innovative, thinking outside of the box, practical, just like what Donovan said. It doesn't take a PhD to know this kind of stuff. But yeah, because if you went to a college, like I went to UCR, people, you're in a college town, why not? Moreno Valley become a college town when it comes to community colleges. Because we have, we have a college here, we have a a great at uh asset, um asset here. Moreno Valley College, we could, we could transform and break, like you were saying, so uh. Social gatherings and and parties and things like that, but Moreno Valley College, Moreno Valley. City of Moreno Valley and Moreno Valley College could work together to do a different kind of branding. We we haven't seen that.
And you gotta think about this, who also rocks uh gear, college gear? Mom and dad, grand, especially the grandparents, they're always something like that, you know, they love the college gear, seeing their grandbaby. School and, you know, it's like, hey, yeah, they started here and then they transferred.
Yeah, when I saw somebody at uh, where was it, eh where I work at, people are always rocking like UCR, I'm a, they proud, I'm a graduate. I'm a proud parent of.
Yeah, grandparent of a.
We could translate that and use that kind of branding model, what we see and translate that into Moreno Valley College. And start doing that new branding with, see the city of Moreno Valley and Moreno Valley College are working together to make a new type of branding. A community college town.
Right, and 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 I think that would incentivize even residents in Riverside to come to take classes here in Moreno.
Yeah, exactly, because you you are the best amb- ambassador by sporting a Moreno Valley College shirt.
And you know, and I I've I've lived here a long time, Darryl, you've lived here a long time, I don't see anybody rocking Moreno Valley here.
No, I don't, I haven't seen anybody, I mean, I haven't seen, yeah.
Barely see people, the only time I really see people rocking RCC gear, City College, is when I'm at the campus. Very rare, you know, I might see him at the mall, very rarely, but you don't really see it, but 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 damn sure I don't see Moreno Valley College.
Well, there, that's that's what I'm saying, because see, the city of Moreno Valley could do a lot to make to make this a more a community college town. Is is working together with Moreno Valley College, like you said, with the shirts, the branding of shirts and things, because. That brings more economic to the uh city of Moreno Valley. When you, when you think about it, because you have access, you showcasing your most powerful asset uh asset, your college. Not warehouses, but your college. Moreno Valley College is an asset that should be spotlighted. And that that the uh city working together could do something and maybe helping with the prices of 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 the uh. Like you said, gear or shirts and and hats and whatever.
Yeah, you know, and and kids love to dress up, especially the girls, now, you know, uh the girls love wearing the pink, you know, I I just wanna see them to start having all that stuff going on.
Look at Skechers, see, you got Skechers. Yeah, you could put, you could find ways to put Moreno Valley gear, Moreno Valley College gear into Skechers, they can have Skechers going down the thing.
A three D printing, you could have Moreno Valley uh college shoes, and I mean, you could do all kinds of things in the technical age, socks.
But see, but see, here's here's again, we've been more pragmatic about stuff, we meeting challenges in the community, that's what I'm saying. We not theorizing things, but we could put theory into practice. And and that's the thing about being a trustee that I will do, you know, Darryl Terrell won't think outside of the box, just like what what we talking about today. There could be different ways of making Moreno Valley College a powerful partner in this community. Where people will know, oh, Moreno Valley College, yeah, I saw this guy walking down the street with a uh mountain lion shirt on and. And and he got some socks and he got a, I mean, it it creates conversation.
And 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 maybe we can do uh so a better advertising in Moreno Valley in regards to signs and uh. Outsourcing signs, the digital signs, like I down at UCR, and just buy a, you know, a monthly, whatever they do to buy the the advertising. The only signs you see in Moreno Valley is like Moreno Valley High School with the arrow going over here off the highway.
Or when you see a marijuana place. But you 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 tapped into something, because again, these billboards, Reno Valley College, you know, a a sign that says. You know, express Moreno Valley's a model or theme, or you could go to class extended learning and stuff on these billboards that's. Leading into the city or leading out to the city, but but it shows that Moreno Valley College, instead of like you're saying. A map, a thing saying, go this way to Moreno Valley College. If you could work with these um these billboard companies to have advertisement of Moreno Valley College, because I haven't seen.
Or work with the city. To make the signs, we we make our own signs.
Yeah, exactly, but we could do a lot more than what we're doing than just go here to Moreno Valley College.
Right, because I I I'll be honest, um you know, when we, when Moreno Valley College came into existence, it was still technically RCC. Extension of RCC. Just like Norco was when they first started. A lot of people, to be honest, do not know Moreno Valley has college, they really don't.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's the biggest, most powerful asset that we have.
It's a big selling point.
Yeah, it's economic mobility, if you want to move up the ladder, go to Moreno Valley College, we'll make sure that you have. The skill, marketable skills you need, so you can have a little bit of a way job in the community. See, but just like you said, though, we we thinking outside of the box, we being pragmatic.
Oh, my god, how dare we?
Yeah, well, why we, why we just sit there and and say, oh, but that's what we have to do. See, the thinking, like I said, Darryl Terrell as a trustee, we ensure that we we look at things like what what me and Donovan. This is what I'm talking about, of dreaming things that never were, or dreaming of. Looking at, looking over the horizon for things we never thought about. This, we just having this conversation, you know. A lot of ideas out of our brains of how we can brand Moreno Valley College.
And bring community pride back.
Community pride.
Maybe bring the city together versus all the drama that goes on at the city council.
This, this is the a point that Moreno Valley College can unify the community.
Right, you know, uh real quick before we go, we got a minute left, I just wanna say this, could you imagine going to city council meeting, seeing? Luis Palomares in a Moreno Valley College shirt, you know what I mean, supporting that and seeing uh who would be the opposition of of Luis Palomares? Uh Roy would have a shirt on different days and stuff, I would have a shirt. And you're saying, even though we're on opposite sides of issues, we have one thing in common, we all live here in the Moreno Valley and we all support. The school for our children.
Yeah, we love our community.
We love our community, exactly, and I I think that would be a great thing. So Darryl Terrell, uh next week, same time, same place, Darryl Terrell is running for district. Five, area trustee five RCCD, he is the only candidate you should be marking on that ballot, he's the only one that's got ideas. He's the only one that's been talking to you guys directly, I have not heard anything from Dr. Finn in regards to publicly, but I could be wrong. I'm not just trying to dog her out, but Darryl Terrell, please continue to uh give us these ideas and when you win the election, let us know where the party's at.
Yes, probably be, I don't know, would just probably be, oh, you won, oh, thank god, man, thank god, god is beautiful.